You're watching Access to Fort County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the December 15th meeting of the Michigan City Commission for Women. You can find more information for this meeting at www accessesalportcounty.org.
They're all to our side.
Here we go.
5:30. Here we go.
It is 5:32 on Thursday, December 15th. We will call the meeting to order of the Commission for Women. Roll call.
Sarah Jones. Baymore.
Present.
Christina Isabel.
Present.
Belinda Lee.
Present.
Albertine Allen.
Present.
Charlene Lysick. Veronica Martin. Angie Nelson Deutsch. Bonnie Schatz.
Present.
And Paul Pullman. Present.
Okay. Great. Now, we need to approve the minutes from the August meeting that we did not approve last month, and also the November meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the August minutes as is.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. And now we are on to the November 22nd minutes.
Make a motion to make a change. Do I have to make a motion to make a change?
Yes.
I do. I heard Albertine Allen, it has the wrong organization. So I do apologize.
More than that, because I actually pulled these off the Michigan City website.
Well, they have.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's Minority Health Partners of the Fort County.
Okay.
We just put MHPOC.
I second. But her motion.
To enter.
The name of her organization. I second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
You need a poll.
And anyone want to put a motion on to approve those minutes?
I'll motion to approve those minutes.
After.
After the changes. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. And moving on to our final report from the amazing Commissioner Charlie Lysick.
Ah, here we go. So. I, I think everybody has a copy. I did this as an annual, so this takes us from, takes a look back on, on the year. So when we started in January of 2022, we had a balance of $15,224.75. Disbursements this year, we only had one grant that we gave out, which was Dune Brook, for $498.98. And then the rest of our expenses was for the tenure gala. I have done a more extensive itemized list of expenses, which I've shown in previous meetings, so. The total was $6,948.85. So total disbursements was $7,447.83. That's in red. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, okay. Sorry. Maybe it's time, maybe it's time I am retiring. So that gave us a subtotal of $7,776.92. Proceeds, these are the proceeds from our ticket sales and donations for the tenure gala, which was $15,100. But that was our total deposits, giving us a balance at the end of December of $22,876.92.
Awesome.
So we're going into 2023 with that balance.
Great. I will motion to approve those minutes. Our, our Charles report.
Second.
Okay, Belinda second it, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
That was a great turnout for the.
Yes. Might I add that I have captured all of the documents I've compiled. I've put them. They are on a, I have them on a thumb drive, along with some extra forms and instructions on what to do for the next treasurer.
Great view.
And as soon as we have the Google Docs up, I'll upload stuff to that as well. So that way we'll have the information too. This also includes the guest list and the email list that I have.
Oh, good.
So.
Great.
You may want to guard that thumb drive with you.
Great.
I'll make three copies.
Yeah.
You know what?
Make three copies. Yeah, make three copies, yeah.
This is a.
Thank you so much.
A random question of that. On our email, the.
Oh, we did the mail check.
Mail check. Do we, do we pay for that, or is that still a free account?
It's a free account, because I think we're under, I think it has to be under a certain number.
Right.
Do you still have the password and stuff on it?
I hope so.
If not, I do.
Yeah.
But I didn't write that down, that was.
I, I must have it, because I, I live in, so I just wanted to make sure. Okay. To check that. Check. Great.
And it probably would be a bad idea to make that password available to maybe the Secretary and the Treasurer.
Yes. I think what I'm going to do is pretty much, once we open the Google Drive for the Women's Commission, that everything is going to be available to everybody. You know, even the email accounts passwords and the mail check passwords, so that it's not just one person that has it, but that anyone can access if anything happens. Okay, so. So that'll all be on that, that Google Drive. I just don't, I just did not have to set that all up, so it will be coming in the year.
Also include on that thumb drive is the pictures from the.
Oh, I may access that sooner. Yeah, okay.
So can I get a, understand about the Google Docs? Docs? So only the commissioners will have access?
Yes.
To the Google Docs?
Yes.
And, because we have got a link to, to it, so then when we retire, then the, our names are removed from the Google Doc?
Yes. Yes, because it's based off of your email. And so then you would just remove whoever's email, and then you would no longer have that access.
Okay. I'm just thinking about the security.
Yeah.
Don't remove my name until we get my stuff up.
Yeah.
Don't remove mine until I can get a bunch of stuff out of this.
Yes, okay.
I'll email you in a bit.
Okay.
Let's do it real quick.
Good, good, good. I, before we go on to the next order of business, I would like to just talk through to add in and discussion about the nominating. Oh, can we just do that in old business? Our new business? That's where we'll do it. Never mind. There we go, we'll do it then. Good. And then reviewing the ordinance and the roles. So I found, we, I only have two copies of this too, so feel free to pass and take a look at it. These are the roles of the, what the Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, and Treasurer's jobs consist of. So I just want us to look at that. If there's anything that we need to adapt or change, I mean, there's some things that I've noticed that we're not actually doing it in that order, so.
Do we have to do it in this order?
This is what we came up with at our September 2019 annual meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We're going that way.
Yes, right.
Okay. I'm sorry, you said these were adopted in 2019 annual meeting?
Yes. So just want us to all take a look at that. If there's any changes that we need, or if we still think these are the right categories for the roles of these people. Then we all just need to make sure we know that for the next round. And while you're looking at that, I will say, in terms of the Zoom meeting, that Fay, interestingly enough, you had moved us down to the City Council chambers for our meetings, and that actually City, the mayor has our meetings listed that we are in the City Hall chamber. So we have the Zoom availability. Gail's office has us in this room, which is what I've had us in, you know, because I didn't know. So we literally can change to that room. I mean, it has to go through a couple more channels if we want that to go through. I do know that we, there's only one person that can access the Zoom, that can be down there from the.
Alcove.
Alcove, thank you. I couldn't think of the name. From Alcove, so therefore, we'd have to now, then also make that change with them. But we can also change to the community center, where we can do Zoom.
Where is the community center?
Where is the community center?
Which community?
The Central School Building.
Oh, the Central School Building.
Oh.
So just, that's my update for the Zoom. If we want to proceed with that, I just need to know that to change where we are, and to get it all a go for the new year.
So is that your motion on the floor, that we move?
No.
No.
She's just a.
I'm just, you know, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is just a discussion.
Thank you.
What'd you like?
I like, to be honest, I like the intimacy of this room.
I like this room.
If we go to Zoom, you can only do two sessions on Zoom. But we should also know, as commissioners, we actually can only miss three meetings.
Three meetings.
So.
So here's a ques, has there, how many months have there been a situation where we don't have a forum?
Happened in July.
It happened in July. It happened in. 2020.
I think we haven't had a forum in my term at least twice, if not three times already.
So within this year.
In this year.
So. And in the past, it wasn't a problem in the past. I think it might have been because COVID got people comfortable being on Zoom.
Yes.
And didn't want to come out, didn't want to come out. And then they made other arrangements, because it's easier to.
Got comfortable.
To do stuff at home, and not have to get dressed and come out.
Oh, much for that.
You know, all I got to do is have to, have to top off.
Exactly.
So we got kind of comfortable, I think, with the Zoom, and then when we just started getting out, we started making plans and kind of. So I don't think it should, it'll be an issue in the future.
Because I, I felt there wasn't a big problem like before 2020, right? Like, we didn't have that many people.
Right.
Miss.
So then are we good to stay in this room, or do you want to move for that Zoom?
So I guess I have a question. So if you're present by Zoom, that if you're not, you haven't missed the meeting, and when you're on Zoom, you cannot vote on budgetary issues.
Yes.
And you only are limited to two times during the year to be on Zoom.
And not two in a row, really, right?
But it, that, that I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know that, he just said two. And, and, go ahead.
And while I.
And you can't vote.
Right, and while I enjoy the intimacy of this room, it does also limit our direct live access to our community.
Oh, because they only have, they can only see it after we've done it.
Right, and that's why we never have.
But they can come present, they can be present.
But once again, they were limited on the number of guests we can have to be present in this intimate space. And if we want to grow and have people even know about our commission, then why not use the public free medium that's available to us?
But, okay, but would we be on Zoom every single time if no one else was on Zoom?
So hopefully.
We wouldn't be. We would solely, we would just be irregular.
We would be like City Hall and the City Council.
Yeah, we'd just be downstairs, sitting, not in a round, but at a, at the panel.
Right, but whether people come or not.
But then there isn't going to be Zoom unless we're on Zoom. It's not like an everyday thing, even at our regular meetings. It's only if we have to.
So my thing is, why, if we have the option for Zoom, why wouldn't we just take the option to be on Zoom every single time, for the public to see, whether we use it as commissioners or not?
Public can see this now. Are we on public access now?
No, no.
We are recording and.
Recording afterwards.
We have to put it on yet, public access?
No, they can't say until after.
That'll be after we process it, and also, it also goes to our Yahoo, YouTube site as well.
So if we are, use the Zoom option, then people have an opportunity, because one of the reasons we start talking about moving was because as the winter is coming, and we look at, we were looking at the comfort, and for, it all started because.
Ms. Allen.
Ms. Allen, and that's just put on the table, right? And so, and it's out of respect for her, as winter comes, she already told us she's not coming to every meeting. So let's give her the option, and other people the option, to also be our meeting live. Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Ms. Allen, Ms. Allen.
So I'm not necessarily putting it on here.
No, because Nicole's already wanted it most of the time.
Well, I will say, I was pregnant and just had a newborn, so I was able to use, luckily it was during COVID, so I can be like.
Right.
Not participating while I was at a time where I cannot leave my house.
Yes.
Limited, am I leaving my house?
Right, and while it is convenient, we want to, my thing is, let's make the community able to know who we are. We want, we're, we've been talking about having the community know more about us.
It's true.
So why wouldn't we choose this option for free advertising?
I will say, one time when we were on Zoom, there was two people from the public at the Zoom meeting, in the Zoom meeting, along with my friend Anne, because I got a text message about it, but I was like, oh, oh, people are on this.
Yes.
Like, I didn't realize, because I wasn't paying attention, but.
But into like.
It was there.
All the years that I've been on this, I think eight years now, I don't think we have ever once had someone from the public come to the meeting, unless they were.
Presenters.
Unless they were presenters, or asking to a grant, but, and the, you know, and it's, you know, it's announced for open door, you know.
Policy.
It's, yeah, it's announced, and people know about it in advance. I do know that people watch this, watch the, watch it on.
Watch it afterwards.
Yeah, yeah.
So Bonnie, do you think they would watch it while we were actually in progress?
I don't, I, I don't really think so.
Really?
But you said two people.
There was two at one of ours, that was discussing lactation and support.
Oh, okay.
I remember physically where I was, but I don't remember the date of that meeting.
So if we do to have our meetings downstairs in chambers, does that mean it will be on Zoom every time?
Well, that's, I thought it'd only be on Zoom when we needed it. But maybe I need to clarify with Gail again on that fact. All I know is that it was more about when you needed it, we could be on Zoom.
Would it be like social status? Are they on?
Every.
Would it be like social status, there, every meeting is?
Oh. Every meeting.
Okay.
Now, Sustainability Commission also, we meet in the EEOC chambers, and we're like squared. And we're, we've been on Zoom every time.
Okay.
That might be a better room than council chambers. Would we be allowed to do that?
EEOC.
Is that downstairs where we have human rights?
Downstairs, huh.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. All right, well then, let me, let me bring that back to Gail, ask her a few more questions, and then if we can be, does it seem like if we can be in the EEOC room, we would be?
Right.
It's human rights meets down there, and it's a more comfortable room.
It's more comfortable.
Okay.
Because you can still, you see every, well, you see each other.
Yeah.
Better than on the council chambers.
Okay, fantastic. All right, so while we'll get back on that one.
And the council chambers, they need to fix their mics. Yes, they do.
So I'm going to swing back to those roles of the President, Vice President. Is, and you want to have anything to add or change, or?
I updated a point on the Treasurer.
Okay. Anyone else need to add or change?
And you can pare it down, I just. Kind of wordy.
Yeah, okay. Great.
So the attendance policy, we're supposed, we can only miss three meetings, you're saying?
Yes.
A year.
A year.
A year. Okay.
And you can only attend two meetings on Zoom.
What happens if you miss three meetings? You just don't bother to?
Well.
Keep that for yourself. So to, to be honest, what is supposed to happen when we, we miss, is that we, we as a commission can decide that that person should not be on the mission. There are results, you know, there's.
But we can decide that there were reasons or something, and, and so they can stay on.
It's, I think it's.
Board decision.
It's the board decision, it's the commissioner's decision, but if you do, and it's a bigger problem, and there's not enough support, you know, input from that person, then we actually can make a motion to remove and add someone. So. Okay. Great. So we did attend, we did the roles, we did attendance, we even did Zoom. Okay. Moving on to, I'm going to save the review of the ordinance until January, when we have a new person, so that we all are on that page. New business.
So are you making a motion that we table the review of the ordinance until?
Yes.
After?
Oh.
Yes.
Yes.
The Chair is, we can, so I make the motion that we table the review of the ordinance until we have the new people on board.
I second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We move to January. opposed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, you have that. You do.
All right. New business.
We were just going to talk about.
Yes, so new business, we have the nominating committee.
So we're adding to our agenda, the nominating committee?
Yes, but it's under new business.
It's under new?
Under, under new business.
Okay.
Anything to add to the nominating committee's search thus far?
I didn't get any calls about anyone wanting to be an officer or to take an office, bail.
I didn't actually see any calls about that.
Who was joining the nominating committee? So the nominating committee was Albertine Allen, Belinda Lee, and Charlie Ann Lysick.
So the only, we did have, you stepped up for, both you and Albertine had said, you retain your position.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Lee stepped up and said she would be Secretary. The only one we didn't have come forward is someone to take over the Treasurer. And I can see it's a very exciting and. I think we have money in everything, so.
I have a thumb drive.
Will you show me how to do it?
Absolutely.
Really, tell me.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion about that, that Treasurer's position? In our organization, we have the Secretary of Treasurer combined, so can I make a motion that?
Bonnie said she would.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Bonnie says.
Thank you, Ms. Bonnie.
I don't want to, but when Char said that she had it.
Thumb drive.
Yeah.
She's got it.
She's a shell on a thumb drive.
I second that nomination.
Okay, good. Do we, all in favor? Or no, we don't?
We gotta, we make the motion that she's.
Don't you guys have to do that?
She volunteered to be changed.
I think we do that January, we confirm everybody in January.
Yes, but we're, we're still part of the nominating process.
Okay.
So we do make a motion to.
To accept new nominations.
Okay.
Officers.
Making a motion to accept a new nomination for Treasury?
I second.
All in favor?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, great. That's exciting. So in terms of finding our two new commissioners that we need for the new year, one of them is the City Council, Nicole, City Council appointee. I have let them know, but I will do it again, remind Angie, because I think they even started their nominees already in this, in December, so we're okay. You know, so it just happens, you know.
It does.
So that, so we know we have a City Council, and then Char is a.
Women's Commissioner.
A Women's Commissioner appointee. So has anyone, and it does have to be someone that lives in Michigan City.
As our, as our guest, and as our senior, I can make.
So that, so, this, this, this. Considering Michigan City now?
There is some discrepancy.
I did not ask about.
Your term.
Excuse me.
You can bear, you can bear to.
All right.
Want functioning.
Yeah, you can bear to. See, we can make nominations at the next meeting too, which is.
Yeah, at the next meeting, we can make nominations.
So we make some person.
We need.
We need one person.
Oh, okay.
We need one person from City Council.
City Council.
Okay. Yeah, she'll be interested, what was, what, she'd be, oh, you would be our.
Yes.
Our appointee. So Christina will do a letter. To the.
And actually.
I think it's kindly?
It's, it's just a sheet that you fill out.
Oh, just, just a sheet here, it's a nominated.
Just a sheet right here.
Yes, there.
That is it.
There it is, thank you, Ms. Conley, welcome aboard. So are we making a motion on the floor that Ms. Conley be accepted as our nomination from the Women's Commission? I'm sorry, I tried to move along with people volunteering.
What'd you say?
I would like to make a motion that Ms. Linda Conley be the Women's, the Commission for Women's nomination, to fill the position being vacated by Char.
You might want to wait till she actually signs.
What I was going to say, she was almost in a box. Well, I second that.
All right.
I guess, all in favor?
All right. Any of them?
Okay. Well, this, that is very exciting.
And I didn't set you up for this. That's what I'm saying. Well, don't say. Linda, Linda Fay Conley.
Linda Fay Conley.
Will you come up on your retirement date? You don't, don't say the rise.
Yeah. Is Linda Fay Conley C O N L E Y? Did she say you could call her Lynn?
C O N.
And L E Y?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect.
Thank you, welcome aboard. We're officially here, we don't mess around.
Okay. And, and Linda, you're from the NAACP? Yeah, yeah.
Do they have a person to nominate to?
Yeah, I'm the person right now.
Okay, you're, you're nominating her for, from the NAACP?
No, no. No. We, we get one appointment, the Women's Commission, we get one appointment. So the Women's Commission. So the women's commission is.
Nominee.
That was the motion on the floor.
But I asked, how do we get someone from NAACP?
She is the same person.
It wouldn't be the same person. It would be one person from NAACP, and then it would be somebody nominated by this committee, and it wouldn't necessarily be NAACP.
No, no.
No, no.
Then is the NAACP person?
We don't need a NAACP.
She was just saying that because I had told her earlier.
Yeah, I just said.
The reason why Lynn, why she was here, because we were gonna go to another meeting.
NAACP.
NAACP meeting, that's, that's why she happened to, that's how I been here.
That's okay.
So, but.
Making it clear.
Right, and so she's our community, but she will represent, our community member nominated by the women's commission, the commission for women.
Do we have somebody from NAACP that's retired?
Right.
That's Faye.
Faye.
Oh, that's Faye, okay.
And she's not retiring until next year.
No, no.
She's a lead.
She's a legal woman.
So now we just need a city council, um, appointee, so that's very exciting.
So are you gonna reach out to them to remind them that that?
Yeah.
Reach out to Angie?
Yep.
Are you independent?
Angie rightly.
So she will get, make sure the secretary gets the correct spelling.
Okay. Then the next thing that's going around, again, I'm sorry, I only have two copies, so take a look, this is the donation form, I just made some changes, just wanna get everyone's eyes on it, make sure I ca- capture everything from my last meeting.
Is there a Dropbox?
You can scan it, see everything in there too. Oh, you want, yeah, you want some of the documents in the city court?
Yeah, I'll do it right now. Um, okay.
I'm sorry, we just over here talking about secretarial stuff, 'cause I'm driving.
So, okay, so we, we request that we raise five thousand dollars, it was too big.
So basically, what I've made the changes on this form is to state individual slash organization, um, in terms of their missions. Um, that it can up to a thousand, if there's any additional changes, they could reach out, if they want something specific, they can reach out.
Oh, I'm agreeing.
And this is just, and then, and once we approve this, then I will just put this new form up on the website. And then, we will do, um, a call, one little call for, that it's there, right? Because I think what we realized last time is we can't give away all the money, otherwise we don't have money to do the events that we're doing. So, but we do want people, some, you know, people to know that it is available.
Yes.
Yeah, so I have a question, the, um. Under old business, we had initially brought up how much we wanted to leave in our bank account for the year, and we tabled that to this meeting.
Yes.
Okay. So.
That's under old business. Sort of should be.
Well, I think that should be dependent on how much our expenses are, usually, right?
Well, we, at one time, was, there was the thought, we didn't wanna get below five thousand, but then we realized, then we wouldn't, you know, five thousand's like not even enough to do one event, so. If, if, if I'm gonna just talk a little ahead to the, uh, Women's International Day Health Symposium, I think we put a budget of, um, six thousand, I think it is? I'm sorry, I don't have the whole, thank you. It was five thousand, up five thousand, so, you know.
I'm looking at like the dollar, for example, it was.
Almost seven thousand.
Almost seven thousand. And so if you only have five thousand, and you wanna be able to put that on.
Say that, exactly.
So, I think like ten is like a cushion.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So we might wanna do at least ten thousand dollars, to keep at least ten thousand in the account at all time.
Yep, I think so.
Christina, I wondered on the form itself, if we could have a statement or some, or on our website or something, that we're not obligated to fund every application we receive, something like that, because otherwise people.
Dispersed.
Can object on that basis, and also, I think on this revised form, I think the report, we had trouble getting any kind of report whatsoever from a few people through the last few years.
Okay.
And I think that it needs to say, right now it says, within thirty days after the event, and I think some of these are not really events even, what about maybe thirty days after you spent the final?
Programming. Dispersed the funds. Dispersed the funds.
Yeah, and, but also there should be a limit, a time limit on that, you know, that, no later than one year from today's date, or something like that, from the date that it's awarded, something to that effect, I think.
Yes.
Just to.
Does it say now, it says just, um, thirty days after?
After event, yeah. Um, also, maybe a brief explanation of what we can fund, which is in our.
I think it's on the website, isn't it?
Yeah, it's in our ordinance, but I'm sure someone's just gonna fill out this form and not look at what we can and can't. So when they're filling out the form, they're like, oh, remember, can't ask for money to pay an employee.
Yeah, I think it does say on the website though, but maybe it should be on the form. Or it could say on the form, look at the website.
Yes.
You don't need to look at the website.
And have like, maybe like, yeah.
Limitations and what we're funding this year, or something like that.
I need to step out.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
What do we need?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll. If I can walk through, you can look at it, we can walk through it.
Okay.
It's not like I'm moving anywhere.
She just makes me on vacation.
Somewhere nice to, Merry Christmas, happy holidays to you too.
Thank you. Okay, so we're not quite done with this. So, okay, okay.
Very close though.
Very close.
Some good, um.
Just write off the changes on it.
Changes on it.
Yes, I got, I got it right here.
So my question is, there was a motion on the floor, was it a motion on the floor, to change the thirty days, um, evaluation to one year?
Was to add, I don't think it was a motion yet, I think we just need to.
We're still in discussion, okay.
Add several more sentences and approve it next month.
So we, yeah.
Just make a motion to, to continue to revise the, um, form.
Yeah, that we could do.
Yeah.
So I make a motion to continue, to continue revising our form before we publish it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay. Take three on that one, good, forget those though, it's good. Okay. Okay, funding policy is done. Old business.
So we do have, make a motion about the ten thousand, don't we?
Oh, yeah, I'll motion to increase our bank, women account.
You're lucky or two?
Our balance to be at least ten thousand, right?
That wasn't, that wasn't in the, um, that wasn't in that, that thing.
No, no, not this, but just in general, in general, if you want to state that we want.
To increase it from five thousand.
Balance at least ten thousand dollars.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
What she said, I'll second that, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, it sounds good. Okay, good. Um, old business.
I have one thing, I wondered if that, um, booklet that we, that Albertine and I worked on with the, for the important women from Michigan City's history, if that could be put on our website?
Yes.
I thought it was going to be, but.
I thought it was.
I sent it to you as a PDF.
A lot of history on there, a lot of people didn't even know about.
Right. Did you learn her? I colorized it.
Yeah, no, it looks really good.
Yeah. Yeah, colored photos and everything, and then the work, um.
Oh, you colorized it.
Yeah, so it's in, all of the photographs are in color.
I love that you added that, because I was gonna ask, you're just happy of that.
I can send it to you.
I wanted a digital copy of it.
I'll send it to you, I, I thought I, I guess I didn't forward that to everybody, I thought, you sent it to me, and I thought I did that, but let me, I will forward everybody the link of that, but we will put it on the website.
It's a PDF, it's a PDF, so. Thank you.
You can all have it.
Share with some homeschoolers.
Okay.
So I have, so, um, I'll say in order, but are you aware that there is a new person who does the IT that posts to the, the e-Michigan City website, the previous gentleman is no wonder with us, and I believe her name is Nicole Michael?
Yeah, Nicole, she's good, she's been, um, really responding, so now I, I know who to go to too.
Okay.
Yeah.
'Cause we keep finding out bits and pieces of information.
Yeah.
And so try to, not.
Alright, so.
Symposium is next.
Yeah, so last, um, last month, we aimed at doing the Women's International Day as a Women's Health Symposium. Um, I am, would love it if it was, I don't know exactly how to move forward on this without creating a little subcommittee to help push that forward, in terms of getting everything to the right people, and finding, you know, really brainstorming on how many organizations to be invested in that. So we, it would be, um, I would love it.
Site?
And we don't have anything right now.
If those one of the things, what's gonna suggest, we have a person search for a site?
Yep.
Several people search for speakers.
So, should we motion to create a subcommittee for this?
That's what I think would be best, 'cause then the, you know, a small group meeting, and then bring it back, we can move, move it along a little faster, um, since March, is, it's not, I think we're fine, we're fine for March. But, but it just comes fast, right, you're like, oh.
It does come fast, once you hit January, like, oh, that's.
So you made a motion to a former, uh, subcommittee to.
Yes, I will motion.
I second their motion.
It'll be there.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
And who would like to be a part of that?
I think.
Site. Site, Albertine.
I'll be glad to work on speakers.
Speakers. Okay.
He said speakers, Belinda. And the other thing would be really, um, we need to see site as a commission, what we, what we want the speaker to be, and what we want to be talked about or whatever.
So I, I'm sorry.
How about we do?
I thought, I was discussing, I thought part of what we had already talked about was each one of the agencies that we choose are going to do a highlight of services provided, I thought we agreed to that in a minute, so.
Um.
We did.
So did any?
I just think a subcommittee will help us.
Oh, no, I just, she, she asked the question, I thought we were, I was telling. I thought we were focused on health.
Yeah, well, so, what, well, two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was.
We helped sponsor the YMCA Women's Health Conference, or whatever they called it, um, and they did.
I don't think those people even still there, I mean, that did that, YMCA, a lot of them have changed over.
But they had like, the set amount of speakers that spoke on certain women's geared health topics versus like giving a brief of what their organization does, and then it was like a little mini health fair in the hallway of other organizations that didn't have a chance to speak, but could talk to people during breakout sessions.
I think what we've talked about this being was like cer- organizations that are involved in maternal health, and, and, um, infant mortality issues, in our, in our, you know, Jewish health issues.
Women's health.
That we would bring a few groups together to find out, like have conversation, like have them kind of brainstorm, what are we lacking in our community, or what, what is, what's our overlap of services? So it's not quite like a public facing.
Okay.
Symposium, it's more of an internal symposium, so that it might help us figure out what is needed in our community, or might, might help them create partnerships, or, you know, um, of, of places where they can work together. Um, I think that's kind of what, I thought we were talking about last month in terms of what this symposium was, not, not a huge.
And is it geared towards maternal health?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that correct, is that what we were thinking?
So I'm doing a review of the minutes, I'm sorry, um, so it looks like the motion was to have a community-wide agency forum to present community details to the community, it was seconded by Char, Char, and then our discussion was the number of agencies to invite to the forum, choose location, date, and time. But we, we didn't actually say, so then we went on to ask, what audience were we trying to reach at the forum? And we established that the goal of the forum is to have all the forum participants know more about each other.
So it's more informational?
Yes, it's info, yeah, so it's not, it's gonna be a health fair, it's not, these are so.
It's information sharing, so we'll know what to do.
Right.
The community, make them aware of what services we have, what we're lacking in services, what we need, and so it would be more like, um.
Providers.
Just providers talking about what's available and what they do to serve the community versus having, um, someone given to speak about one topic in particular.
Yeah. Right, and what are their issues now, right now that things have changed, how are they, how are they being affected, and maybe that might help stem conversation within them? Um, it might also help us figure out what we wanna fund.
Mm-hmm.
Or what's need, you know, like all of a sudden we see this need, and, you know, what's there?
Well, that sounds like it would be a better, um, be, be a type of a virtual type symposium, I think.
Well, it'd be virtual, we'd learn better, learn more from one another if we were just like we are here, and, but not in a huge place. Uh, you can ask questions and get answers right then, and then you could talk about what you do that versus what I do, and how I serve my community that I reach, and what you do from NAACP, so it's more like a, a family than just a virtual, because virtual, sometimes you can't get all your questions asked and answered.
Okay. So we definitely talking in person, though?
Mm-hmm, I suggest that we do.
Okay.
Sometimes that you click that button, you have a Zoom, you click that button, and you cut somebody off, and then too, if you're trying to that person talk, and then you, that's, that's the good thing about Zoom, you can click them off. But we have family Zoom, so when my brother gets to talking, I go click.
Okay, so do you wanna get on that committee?
Would you like to be on?
I'll definitely.
I like, I, I kind of like to be on that subcommittee.
Yeah.
Faye?
Yeah, I don't, um, what part would you like to do, what would, we'll just be on the committee.
Yeah, just be on the committee.
Check on, just try to find resources, peo- like you say, the different groups or organizations that are.
Presenters.
Yeah.
I think this will help.
Alright.
And then I, I'll, I'll be on it.
A subcommittee for the Women's Health Symposium.
So that's four right now.
And then he and Ms. Linda Faye speak up as well?
Yes, Linda did.
Well, I'm right five, um, okay, that's, I think that's okay, right, is five okay?
I think that's a.
That's add number for you?
I think that's a, that'll be well, because, if we're looking at, are, so which area do you wanna do, location or presenters?
Maybe presenters.
Okay, so three presenters, and Ms. Tiny, a location.
I'm gonna be on one.
Oh, yes ma'am, but I was saying, the only person that was looking at Ms. Christian.
I'm gonna be on, but.
No.
Yeah.
Location, presenters, all, everything.
I'm just gonna help some admin, because there's probably gonna be stuff that.
Did we pick a date on that?
No.
No.
We can be a day, it's using August, right?
We picked the dates, it's March.
March, March eighth, twenty twenty-two, and we already approved.
Twenty twenty-three.
March twenty twenty-three.
March what?
March eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Eight, that is it.
And we already approved a five thousand dollar budget.
I'm gonna make a motion that we change the budget.
On Wednesday.
Because.
It's Wednesday.
We spent seven thousand dollars.
So we're not gonna, so, we're not gonna spend the five thousand dollars, we made sure that we had the budgetary motion already done, since Ms. Lively was leaving, she was gonna do those last pieces for us, so by the time that March comes, we will already have a disbursement funds from the control. We don't, we're being, we don't have to use the whole five thousand dollars, nobody is.
She said might be five.
I think we might need five, more than five thousand dollars.
For the Women's Commission to.
Yes.
This is gonna be that bit.
We're not feeding anybody gourmet meal, we're not doing gourmet meals.
Why not?
Because they're gonna have, because we don't wanna be our meat.
So this is all in the subcommittee.
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 Ms. Tiny.
So, um. So, okay, so for this subcommittee, um, we want to, um, pick a date at this time for that meeting, or do we wanna do that through your email? Let me see, um.
Can you send out a chip?
I'll send out a thing to Albertine Bell, Christina Faye, and Linda, and Linda.
Uh, where is that, the doodle, doodle pool?
Yeah.
Send your possible dates, 'cause, you know, then we can, we choose one of those, the majority wins.
Yeah. Okay.
I think that's, is it cool? Doodle, doodle pool, doodle.
Doodle.
Okay.
Doodle.
Great.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna love the place.
Bonnie, if there's anything that you wanna, you know, add to that?
Send more of that.
Just something we can add last.
March eighth is on a Wednesday. Expect to have like a venue.
Yes, on Wednesday. Some food.
That's the second Wednesday.
And any tech, immediate tech.
March eighth is second Wednesday.
And.
So I'll still be all, I'll be here.
After thirty minutes.
Any tech needs, like projectors or, or in a space of people.
It'll have to be after tools, lots. So really, which is food, tech, location.
Because that's Women's International Day.
Women's International, uh, day. As long as it's my day.
So we've always.
But it doesn't have to be on that date. And, cause why never, we gotta get a venue on that date. Well, that's the reason why I said site, we don't have to pay for the site on a weekday if we go to Orac. Oh, that has to pay, we just have to buy the luncheon from there, we don't have to pay for the facility. Yeah, so that, that's important, that'll save us a lot of money. So I also missed that sentence, I'm sorry, when I said if we go to Orac, we don't have to pay for the facility. We just have to buy our luncheon from there, you don't have to pay for.
Okay.
See, that's reasonable.
Yeah, so it's not gonna be much at all.
So what, yeah, so.
So, and we're not gonna have more than, I can't imagine we would want more than twenty-five.
Well, she put a motion on the floor to increase our budget, so are we?
Just talking.
Oh, it was a discussion, I'm sorry.
So, okay, so we have a committee, that's fantastic. And we will send a doodle pool to create our date, and we'll have more information for everyone next month, okay? All right, uh, moving on, city council.
Who may sound liaison, no.
Angie.
Oh.
But, but. Yeah, that'll change in January, probably.
Oh, I have not received notice.
She's the one who, I think she's the one that assigns, oh wait, she might not be president in January. I think the president of the council.
So we're just gonna.
But she's absent today.
She's absent.
She's absent.
Um, any commissioners comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of days. Just some, um. They, normally, we don't participate, we, we haven't participated as a women's commission in a lot of the activities that go on throughout the year. So I think by starting to, um, do that, however. The, the first thing in January is using MLK breakfast. There will not be, uh, MLK breakfast at PNW this year. Because they are doing a, uh, remembering the legacy Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, Thursday, January the twelfth. Twenty twenty-three, and on, I'll pass around the play, you guys can take a picture. And then Monday, January sixteenth, is gonna be take a day to help in your community.
It's a day of service.
Take a day to do what? A day of service, a day of service. While the PNW campus will be closed, we encourage students, faculty and staff to take this day off to volunteer. PNW will be hosting several community service activities on this day, to participate in a day to work. And so on and so forth, however, there is a commit, there is a group that is gonna try to do a breakfast. In the community, um, on that day. And this is their sponsorships. I don't think we can afford their sponsorships. I'll just let you know about that. The Michigan City Black History Month Committee has met, and we would like you to save these dates for the month of February.
For what?
Uh, Michigan City Black History Month Committee. Uh, oh, we do, we do, I would like to pass this around for you guys to look at, um. This will be something that we could participate in, uh, as a sponsor, cause we can probably afford one of their sponsorships. The platinum sponsorship is seven hundred and fifty dollars, you get special recognition on the event banner. You get recognition at the end of the month, celebration logo on all materials, your celebration. Your logo will be on all of the materials that go out in the community. Uh, you'll get recognition at all events and distributed, distributed materials. An invitation for three at the community brunch, there is a community brunch that's gonna be on February the fourth.
Where's that gonna be?
Uh, right now, it's gonna be at the Salvation Army, but that's by invitation only. Their celebration brunch is by invitation only. The gold level is five hundred dollars, and you get basically the same recognition. But you only get two people can come to the community brunch. The level I was hoping that we would do would be the silver le- level, which is two hundred and fifty. And you get ba- the basic same recognition, where only one person can come to brunch. But you get pretty much the same recognition for two hundred and fifty dollars.
So can I ask what those funds are gonna be used for?
The funds is used for that, the, uh, for the, to get the printed material, for the, for the thing, you get the banner.
It's like a fundraiser, so what are they gonna do with the funds, that's what I'm trying to find.
That's what I'm saying, the sponsorships is how we pay for the printed materials that's given out. The sponsorships is how the luncheon is paid for, the brunch rather, is paid for on the fourth. And we do a quiz bowl, and we buy t-shirts and stuff for the teams that are on the, uh, that's in the quiz bowl. And also, uh, we do a talent show at the end for the youth, and so the money is used for those. For those activities, cause most of the locations that we have our events at are usually donated. Uh, funds, but so the.
This last one you said is the Michigan City Black History.
This is Michigan City Black History Month Committee.
Committee, okay.
Black History Month Committee, that's, uh, runs the different events, that's, uh. I'll be tell, give you the dates in a few minutes. Uh, the bronze level is a hundred dollars, you get recognition at the end of the month, celebration logo on the materials. Distributed, that's all you get for the hundred dollars. The, um, events that, we said the brunch is by invitation only on February the fourth, twenty twenty-three. And that's gonna be at the Salvation Army, it'll be ca- a catered event. Then we're gonna have black cinemas, we haven't decided when and where they're actually gonna be done. Uh, the quiz bowl is gonna be February the eleventh, and that location is not in stone yet. The Gospel Fest is gonna be February the nineteenth, and that's gonna be at the Salvation Army. Uh, more information will be going out about that also. Uh, Essence Rare does the, Indiana does the Black Expo in Michigan City. Uh, we don't have a date for the Black Expo yet, but tentatively, it's normally the third Saturday. Which is February the eighteenth, is usually the third Saturday.
Usually Essence Rare sponsors the Debutante Ball.
They do the Debutante Ball too, yes, yes, those are the two events they normally do, the Debutante Ball, Ball, Ball and the, uh, Black Expo. The Black Expo is basically, uh, vendors that have their, own their own businesses, uh, or mostly, um, black. Businesses that have their own businesses, and they usually have, uh, different types of entertainment during the Black Expo.
So, so you don't have a date for where that's from?
The date is tentative, it's, it has in the past always been February the eighteenth. We, they have not been at our meetings yet, so we don't know for sure, so we're doing a tentative date of. They usually do the third Saturday of the month.
But you don't have a venue yet.
We don't have any information other than we're tentatively. Put in the third Saturday on our calendar, because that's when they normally do it.
And how can, and then I have a question about vendors?
They do, they get, they send out their letter for the vendors and all of that, that's why I say we, they haven't been at the table yet, so.
I'm sorry, I missed that, thank you.
Yeah, the Black, Essence Rare group has not been at the table yet, so we don't know. If they're gonna do it, we don't know, uh, but they normally do it, the third Saturday. They started that before we even started the Black History Month Committee.
Well, that's been in existence for twenty years. So.
Tell us about the Black History Committee.
Oh, okay, can I finish? We have health and job fair, it's gonna be February the eleventh. Uh, with panel discussions, and it's gonna be a job fair, the location has not been, um.
You will have a health and job fair, you have a top to minority help.
The date, the group just, we just had one meeting to get, and we got all this together in the one meeting. The talent show is always the fourth Sunday at the Performing Arts Building. For the youth. And, uh, Canessa Cars usually, uh, run that, and Red Raff. And they usually, Red Raff. They usually do the talent show, they haven't been at the meeting, but we always have it on, uh, that's what we always do for that. Uh, the Lebesnet Art Center is gonna have a family night on February the eleventh from one to three. I forgot what date that was on, but they're gonna do, um, a family night. Uh, February eleventh from one to three. And, um, okay.
What time is the quiz bowl?
The quiz bowl, we're just working on that, cause we haven't got the location yet.
Cause you have three activities on that.
Yeah, well, the Le- the Lebesnet Family Night is not part of our group, just that somebody was at the meeting. And they.
Can you email this list of events, so therefore we have them ready?
She's got her notes on, she'll see. Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm, I will get, I have, uh, when I get the notes from, um, our. Uh, person, I will send it to you. I, I actually don't, but these are just my notes from the meeting, and, um, I'm just trying to get it out there. So did you guys get on your account numbers? I do wanna say that, one more thing, uh, my comments, uh, the. Michigan City has a new group called the Black Business Association, and they're doing Kwanzaa. The week of December twenty-sixth through January first, at the Hope Building.
From January first?
January first, from December twenty-sixth to, um, um. December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two to January first, twenty twenty-three. And, and the activities they're having, they're having arts and crafts daily from two to four at the Hope Building. The Hope Building is at two 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 McClellan, it's the old park school for those that live in Michigan City. It's the old park school. That's the Hope Building, so they're gonna have arts and crafts for the youth daily from two to four. They're gonna have community resources from four to six. They're gonna have daily speakers on the principles of Kwanzaa from five to five thirty. And they're gonna have networking and refreshments from five thirty, so I guess whenever people start leaving. And they're gonna have music, drummers, dancers, and Saturday. I forgot what date that is, they're gonna have a community bazaar, and they're gonna have stepping and line dancing.
Nice.
You don't know what date they're doing?
That's the third first.
That'll be the thirtieth.
Thirty-first, New Year's Eve.
New Year's Eve, yep.
They're gonna do, uh, Saturday Community Bazaar during the day, I don't have the time, uh, for that, and the stepping and line dancing. And then Sunday is gonna be good old fashioned Sunday O-O-L-E School Church. At the Community Gospel Choir and praise the answers, I, I, I can send that to. Now, I can't send that flyer to you.
And so can I bring you back on that, so the Michigan City Black Business Association is, um. It's empowering black business in the Michigan City, and they're open to membership, and they are, the Michigan City Black Business Association on Facebook. And they have, um, the application process is outlined on their Facebook page.
Okay, now I asked about Black History Committee, the Black History Committee came out from, um. From the Social, Michigan City Commission of the Social Status of African American Males around about two thousand. And twelve, thirteen or somewhere around here, I, I forget, it, oh wait, he does say it in his letter.
Oh, the letter.
Yeah, for Mike, uh, okay, the Michigan City Black History Month Committee. Would like to invite you to be a partner in making the month of February twenty twenty-three a great month for this community. The Michigan City Black History Committee will be working together for, has, has been working together for nine years in a row. To put together events and activities to educate the community and celebrate Black History Month. This will be the first time in two years that the celebration will be held in person. And the committee plans to live up to the expectations of providing good things to the community. The Michigan City Black History Month Committee is made up of several community organizations that have collaborated. To plan and organize a month of programming to celebrate Black History Month. Also, this committee works to keep the community aware of the programs available for the community to celebrate. And be educated about, about Black History through an organized calendar and additional marketing resources. The committee would like to give you the opportunity to be a sponsor of this event and activities through the following levels. That I read off earlier, yeah. So that's the, the purpose of the Black History Committee. Any other questions?
So I make a motion that we consider, um, the silver level of sponsorship. Which is two hundred and fifty dollars for the Black History Month Committee.
I will second that.
Great, thank you. All in favor? Albertine? Well, there we go. So that, I need, um. This is something that the treasurer, this one, had, and the information on of how this goes down. So it is good that you've let us know now, because we would be in enough time.
So I'm gonna give you this letter, so you can get the information from here. Cause we're gonna send the check and stuff, uh, cause we usually funnel our money through Essence Rare. And the other ones we haven't heard, cause they're five oh one C three.
Right.
And the other ones we haven't heard from yet, so.
I think this is great, and actually, my, my thought was like for, um.
So at least the women's commission will be, be on the programs, and be on the, uh, banner and all the other good stuff. So it gets our name out there.
Yeah, and I, I love the idea of, of really supporting, um.
Other organizations, I think.
Other organizations of black female-owned, um, businesses, if, I don't know, if we could sponsor. One of the vendor, I mean, I'm just throwing something out, like, it, it, I'm sure the vendors have to pay to be in the, um.
Vendors have to pay to participate in their, have their, their, uh, show.
They should, someone should consider us.
What, what are the vendors, do they say? The Black Expo, the Essence Rare, the vendors do pay.
The local women.
It's pretty reasonable, it's, I've seen like in the past.
Twenty-five dollars.
It was like twenty-five or thirty dollars in the past for the vendors. And they usually make that back in.
Yeah, yeah.
In no time.
Yeah.
Cause they sell their stuff on the.
They've just gotta find a place where people will come, because the last one that I attended was at the mall, the mall was closed. And so it didn't bring a lot of people, and when we had it at the mall, it was huge success, because people were shopping. And they stopped for the entertainment, but, but now you've gotta find a place where people are gonna really, really come and be.
Right.
And have it at a safe time, cause you don't wanna be on the west side when it's dark, just be honest.
Don't wanna be in Eastwood either.
You know, like New Year's Eve, well, thank you, Fay.
Well, this is great, I'm very excited, um, we can, anyone have anything else that they need to say at this time?
I wanna say thank you all. It was nice getting to know everyone, and it's been a pleasure.
Is this your last meeting?
It is.
I'm gonna miss you.
I will miss you.
But you can have a visit us. You know, when we meet.
Then you have my emails.
All right, uh, great, so our next meeting is January nineteenth.
Do you wanna mention the legislative breakfast?
And I forgot, I do want to start adding to our agenda the legislative updates.
So, um, the legal women voters is having a legislative breakfast.
Let me ask, let me say this before you close, um, sickle cell is on the rise, and that, that's a problem with African Americans predominantly. And so, um, Dr. Motley has generously agreed to do a presentation or a PowerPoint presentation on sickle cell. And so, uh, we need to find a date that, that is agreeable with him, and he would do a presentation to the commission. So we could go back and talk about sickle cell and know what we're talking about.
Great. What do you mean by it's on the rise?
It's, it's like, you know.
It's been there, but.
It's been there, but now it's, it's just like, uh, any other disease, it tends to.
It's been there, but now it's, it's just like uh any other disease, it tends to come back.
Genetic though.
Yes, it's genetic. So you have more people with sickle cell now than you did two or three years ago.
Is it because they're able to live longer and so they can have more children longer and like the medical?
I don't know, I don't wanna say because I'm not sure.
Yeah, I have a dream that, that her daughter has sickle cell and she's in the hospital longer she's home.
She comes and they had sickle cell.
Yeah.
Very painful.
This is, it's, I know it's a genetic, uh, it's an inherited.
Do you um. I mean, we come here. In January meeting or do you wanna?
I can ask him if we can have it in January or February.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't really want a presentation.
It doesn't help right now.
We have malaria in the United States.
Yeah, I can't hear you over there.
She was saying about, if you sickle cell and malaria, I said, but we don't have any malaria in the United States that I know of. I haven't heard of.
Yeah, we don't have malaria.
We don't live in a bad area.
So we're gonna. She's gonna check on January or February for him to come in.
Okay.
Okay.
And so can I do some um information from the League of Women Voters?
Yes.
So the League of Women Voters um is scheduled for Monday, January the ninth um at five thirty P M in the E O C room here in City Hall. And we also have the League of Women Voters Luncheon, um which is called the Lunch with, Lunch with the League on January the tenth. And our speaker will be Erica Stallworth.
But wait a minute, on, on January ninth, that's a, uh.
That's Monday night.
Monday. That's, we're having a meeting.
Is this gonna have a meeting?
Tomorrow.
No, we're having a meeting about that tomorrow to really plan it.
Oh, oh, oh.
But I think it's going to be for training people who want to run for, um, yeah, for offices, elected office.
And then January tenth is what now?
Like January twenty.
Lunch with the League.
Lunch with the League.
Where is it at? And the fourteenth is the legislative breakfast.
Yeah, I would.
And where is it at?
So that, so let's start the top so for no confusion. So on January ninth, there's going to be training in the E O C.
Okay.
Room here in City Hall for training for people who are interested in learning how to run for public office. There is currently some partnerships and collaborations to do that.
Great.
The League of Women Voters is also having on Tuesday, January the tenth at Portofino, our guest speaker will be Erica Stallworth. January the fourteenth will be.
It's a Saturday.
Which is a Saturday.
Legislative day.
Legislative train.
Legislative what?
Breakfast.
Legislative breakfast. Man, I'm bored. Will be our legislative breakfast, will be at Briar Leaf Golf Club, the home of Portofinos. They are located at thirty-two, thirty-two thirty-three North State Road, thirty-nine in La Porte.
Eight thirty-one.
Uh, yes.
Eight thirty-one?
Eight, eight thirty?
Breakfast. The legislative breakfast.
But the, um, our history of that is that it has always been limited to L W B members.
Right.
Who can attend it, but this year, the board decided to, wanted to invite, nope, just the.
Just the Women's Commission.
Because.
Oh, just, oh, this is special.
Now we gotta go.
The League of Women Voters is credibly inviting the Women's Commission to join us on that day.
Great, and our state legislators will be there sometimes, um, and somebody is going to be there, either Representative Marvann or one of his aides. And we have invited Senator Braun and Senator Young. Don't know yet if they're coming, but it's a chance to really be in a small group, you know, twenty, thirty people who can ask the legislators anything. There's no press present. It's a, it's our chance to really get some answers from them.
Oh, that's great. Send us that email, Bill.
Yes, ma'am, I will.
All right, um, it is.
Thank you, Miss.
Six to forty-six, we will adjourn, adjourn.
Motion check.
Oh, make a motion to adjourn.
I do.
Thank you. A second?
I have two.
Oh, it's great. Great, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks.